At this time, I would like to call the September 22, 2021 meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda presented before us this evening with the addition of walk-on Resolution 8D1 through 8D4 resolutions. May I have a motion to approve those resolutions, the agenda, please?
So moved, Bernice?
Bernice?
Second, Malani?
Malani? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have the minutes of the September 8, 2021 Board of Education meeting presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Anne? Second?
Second.
Princilla? Any additions, corrections, discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We now have a privilege of the floor, and I would like to read a few statements. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. Although state law does not require us to hold a public comment period, we have chosen to do so because we believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. This is because we take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and our community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. Speakers may address any matter of interest to them. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I would like to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. And as a matter of fact, we would like to encourage you to submit comments to Martha Morris before noon on the day of our board meeting so that those issues may be, at least the process for addressing them may start at that time. If that does not prevent your coming to the meeting and presenting it here, if you wish. Okay, so the board will now entertain public comments, and those comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. Thank you. The first person I have is Michael Vandenberg.
Hi, my name is Michael Vandenberg. I am the head coach and board member of the Schenectady Soccer Club. I personally am in charge of our travel leagues that involve anywhere from under 10 players all the way up to U-16s. I'm here to go over with the facility usage policy that has, I know, been in place for a long time through email with myself and Mr. Soler. I know it's on the agenda as well as we brought up tonight, but I just kind of wanted to express my feeling in regards to, of all the years I've played for Schenectady Soccer Club, we've always used your gym facilities during normal, normal business hours. Does not affect any of your extracurricular activities after school. It's always staffed by custodian, and we're not asking for custodial staff to stay late for extra usage lights, equipment, or anything like that. We always bring in and take out what we have. I personally ran this for seven years with great acceptance from your district, from this district, and our players from the travel teams directly impact your school sports, specifically soccer. I can say 95% of my players right now on my U-14 boys and U-14 girls, those players are currently playing on your modified, your JV and your varsity teams. So this is an alternative, this is an option for them to be playing throughout the year, not just focus on a two-month window. We run from September to June. So it's a lot of time. We really need your help with gyms because financially, our parents are unable to afford currently what's being asked. So we're looking for some type of help or some sort of solution to, you know, whether it's a lower income or no charge as a benefit. But it directly affects your students because every, 100% of my players are from this district. My parents are from this district. They pay school taxes. So we'd like any help that you can provide us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. Heather Steenberg?
Hi, there. I am an ex-coach, assistant coach of Golden Knights, and I'm also a parent. And I'm here to support anything that is going forward. I moved here and with my daughter in 2017. We have been part of his team, seventh. And I actually came from a, actually a very small community. And we're very pro soccer. You know, he did a lot. And it, it actually shows in our, our numbers and everything throughout the years, like you said. So my daughter is currently on the modified team, which we didn't know if we were going to have to keep her this year. So she's actually a member of two teams right now. And without the Schenectady travel team, I don't know how to where we end right now. There, it's very hard for, if you're not maybe involved in soccer, or to, you know, and that helps us here. When you're already involved and you're being able to do it without maybe going broke, or, you know, your kid's already involved in that at a young age, then it really shows. And I just hope that maybe the ongoing, you know, the issues here are involved to help push this through. Because typically, a, a good, you know, scholar, they, they for years have always had maybe athletics or, you know, anything to help push the student evolving. So hopefully, we, we think about the kids right now. And there's a lot of them. There's only a couple able to be here right now, but they both, they all had games today. So that's where I'm here for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steenberg. Jeffrey Gaiman? I'm sorry, I can't quite make out the name. Jeffrey? Oh, I'm sorry. Tell, tell me how that last name is spelled, please. Oh, nowhere close. G-U-L-A-R-Z-A? Okay.
So my name's Jeffrey. I'm fairly new to the soccer. My daughter's here. She, she loves the sport. She loves playing. It's, it's a main attraction to the kids itself. They're not in the streets. They're not called in danger. Three years Schenectady, and it's hard, you know. I'm not the richest guy, definitely not. And there's a lot of families there. They predict the pandemic. And all these price raises from COVID and everything going upward, it's, it's a lot of tension, you know. And all I can really say is, these kids deserve a lot, you know. Me growing up in the young city, I didn't have each thing. I had nothing. But for me to see the kids have that privilege, it puts a smile on my face. And now she's doing modified. So she's, she's developing more and more as we see the family. And I don't want to see that get pushed away just because, you know, training facilities or whatever nature it could be. These kids deserve more. 100% deserve more. And at the end of the day, we all miss kids. All of us do. And we all did sports. We all hung out with them. Did that, they good. And this is what we are. But these kids deserve enough.
Thank you, Mr. Galarza. Ashley Rodriguez?
I'm a part of the Schenectady Soccer Club. Sorry, I think I was making a mistake. I was just, I was just like, I was trying to figure this out. We all lived in the same home, so they were connected. I lived in the same school. I didn't, wasn't necessarily given enough to me that I started getting memories. I didn't teach from them, but they all wanted to come through. I was very young at the time. And I'm really happy that people are able to have a family, really, 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 something that they can never, and this was no fault. And it's really different. I was close to the other side of the country. And although, it's, I hope they're able to keep coming out. And I feel, the reason, the reason I'm glad we're here are, that you and I have been bringing this along with them. So I pray every day that I do the same thing as a mom, intention that I would be a young mom, that I worked with mom to make sure to know all things that I was given. So things, whether they're absolutely better than myself, or, or they can't seem like I'm going to, but it was really beneficial to them. Or hopefully, to have the students be a part of something and have something that would keep them away from going along, you know, and they would put their heart, always something that they really loved, really cared for, and made myself be able to play modified, be able to be that mother who really wants to be somebody, and still able to be, and really be able to all, everybody raised them all, you know, because our mom had a big problem. And, you know, was on the break, they were upstairs, and these kids are in the front of the block of the kind of, of being home and not being able to be in school. Now, if they're able to be in school, and have not really been socialized, and, um, even if it's not really good, they're now, they're at school, and now they play soccer, and they're just being there. And those things you do right there. So, you know, we negotiate something that would be, we are all technical now, like, well, they play regularly, well, eventually one day, we can, and then equally, on top of that, um, if you're something that, if the world, whatever, they're going to develop, and then, you know, we, we, we'll have our, and we'll let ours, it's a big thing for their generation to come that way. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
So we can hear you perfectly when you're doing your comment, but I thought while you were going. If you guys could use a mic because you're streaming, and then anybody watching probably can't hear you, the great things you're saying. So just make sure to grab the mic so the streaming people can hear you as well.
Christine Moore?
First, I'd like to thank the board for listening, responding, and following up regarding this issue. I think we, there was, it came up, we reached out, and there was great response back. So thank you. My kids have played with Schenectady Soccer Club for years. They're not on the travel team, but I support what's going on. Ashley was their coach. It's a great program. Three kids in the, you know, it's expensive. They'd always give me a break for multiple kids. Families would donate cleats and, and things were reused. It was really a comfortable organization, and it was affordable, especially for having multiple kids in a family. So I support their use of the facilities. And I think about it as well in terms of parks and what our cities do, you know. A couple meetings ago, you were discussing the facilities and the state, or, there was public comment regarding the state of the facilities here for athletics. And the similar conversations go on about our city parks and how they need to be kept up. But what are the needs of our students, especially post-COVID? What happens when the parks and the athletic facilities have students in them? And I've all heard you reference at some point seeing the football's field being utilized and that feeling that it brings to you. Well, it's just as important to the people who are there, and it's important to the community to see these things be fully utilized. I also, I see students building relationships and socializing. I know it's been a difficult first couple weeks for my young ones. Socialization and just adapting to being around other people. Soccer is a great way to kind of break through some of those barriers and develop friendships and to build teams and to work together. All things that our young people need now post-COVID. With the presentation of the ARPA funds this evening, these are the things that it's addressing. It's like, what are our students' needs? Facilities and ability to interact and socialize are some of their needs. In terms, kind of off-topic, but related to the ARPA funding, I was able to glance at the presentation on the board docs and just noticed a couple observations. One was extra service opportunities for teachers. And I'm not within the environment. I'm an outsider. But I do hear that there's a teacher shortage. And so I'm just concerned that the approach to extra service will result in burnout, knowing that teachers are also coming back with the similar struggles to what our students are. And the demand for extra service is high. I mean, it's everywhere. I had the privilege of looking at Washington Irving recently, and I see the need increasing there. And I wasn't sure if that was going to be addressed, but I just wanted to make it a point to acknowledge the services that Washington Irving provides, especially coming off of crisis or coming through a crisis. We're still in a crisis. So, community was the other area. There were four specifically listed community partners. But I think, again, as an example with the Schenectady Soccer Club, the community partners go beyond that. And that's really all my comments that I have for this evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. That's all I have signed up at the moment, so we will move to the superintendent.
Good evening, board members. Oh, there's one more sign?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have your name on here. If, if you would like, come up to here and give me your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Keyda Hinkson.
Can't hear you, sorry.
My name is Keyda Hinkson. I live at 925 Pleasant Street.
I, I need you to spell your name, please. I, I'm not hearing. Is anybody else hearing it?
Keyda.
Jada?
Keyda.
J-A-D-A?
K-E-Y-D-A.
K-E-Y?
D-A.
D-A. And your last name?
H-I-N-K-S-O-N.
H-I-N-S-O-N. Okay. And where do you live, Keyda?
I live at 925 Pleasant Street in Schenectady.
Emmett Street in Schenectady.
Emmett Street?
Pleasant.
925 Pleasant Street.
There we go. Teamwork.
Pleasant Street, okay. Okay. Please go ahead.
I am here tonight because unfortunately, I received a call from Albany Leadership today in regards to a former Mont Pleasant student, which is my daughter, in regards to not having met the sufficient need to be in the ninth grade. They stated that her transcripts from Schenectady showed three years of insufficient information to where she should not have graduated, which, when she was attending Mont Pleasant, I advocated for her to be retained and was told that it was not, you know, able to be done because of, I believe, the No Child Left Behind Act. So, receiving a phone call today, I am in a state of confusion because, as I stated to the person on the phone, we're all New York State, if I'm correct. So how can Schenectady School District consider her a ninth grader? And then you tell me she doesn't qualify to being a pro run because of not having the needs met while she attended middle school for three years.
Have, have you contacted the district about this difficulty?
I had the woman send an email, which she did.
Oh, I thought it was from someplace else that you got the email. Albany Leadership or something? Did I hear, Miss here?
Correct. I asked the person that I spoke to today, because I'm finding out today, this morning, of this situation. With all the changes within our district, I didn't know who or where to begin. Because prior to our pandemic, when I, when she was a part of Mont Pleasant Middle School, I took every avenue for seeing this situation that I'm bringing forth to you. I have met with people in accountability. I've met with a team of those who were supposed to come aboard to assist. Now, I have to unfortunately figure out a way to tell my 14-year-old who was excited about going to Albany Leadership that she doesn't get to stay there because her part, as well as our part, and her education in Schenectady School District failed her.
Albany Leadership, is that a, is that a charter school in Albany?
It is a charter school. And I'm learning in this process that charter schools can have different elements outside of the public school. And as I expressed this to them as well as someone else, even with that being true, we still have to look at the fact that we allowed a student for three years that did not attend classes, that did not do anything to be worthy of graduation, be pushed to the ninth grade.
Okay, I think, I think at this point, we understand the situation, and someone will be talking with you. Oh, Anibal's going to respond here.
So Ms. Hinkins, we typically don't respond to speakers directly, but I did get you the email at a quarter to four from the charter school. And so I will have folks on our end follow up. You are correct. There was, historically, for the last three years, there were some marks. I don't want to share your daughter's business in public. But I have Dr. Mason, who's right there for accountability regarding grading and report cards. Mrs. Towe Freeman, who's here for student support. So I think we're going to have to get together with you, figure out a plan and how we can support you. Obviously, the charter schools do have the determination to decide who they accept. But I think the most important thing is to figure out how to support your child, given some of the historic attendance and some of the marks, and figure out how we can work with you and support you and your daughter. And so it's not something that I'm super familiar with, but I did see that they did communicate. They did include me. And I did get it around a quarter to four. And so I haven't, I haven't been able to charge the people internally to reach out and support you. And I know you are also an employee in our district, so we want to make sure that we provide as much support as possible.
I appreciate that because just as you receiving it in the last minute of your day, although I received it this morning, it's going to affect me because as of tomorrow, I don't know where to send her. As of tomorrow, I don't know if I'm able to go to my job because of...
So before you go, Dr. Mason will connect with you, and let's set something up so that we have a plan for tomorrow, so that you can go to work, and your child has a place to go, and we can figure out stuff, okay?
Thank you very much, Ms. Hinkson. Sorry, I couldn't hear your name quite so well. Sorry.
I couldn't hear the address either, apparently.
Now, now I believe that we've completed the list of people I had for public comment, and your turn.
So first, I want to thank our speakers. Again, I know we don't typically address everybody. I thank the board for giving me the flexibility to address mom's concern there. A lot of things that are historic that we continue to find. And so we'll figure out the best way to support Ms. Hinkson and her child as well. So we'll dig through it. But do also want to thank our parents who spoke regarding facility use. Definitely something that we've uncovered, and I think the board is going to talk about that tonight. I do want to recognize you and thank you guys for, for coming to speak. I do want to recognize you and thank you guys for coming to speak. I know some of our board members always thank our speakers, but I just think it's important to validate, because you could be anywhere in the world right now, right? But you're here at a board meeting and expressing your, you know, your feedback and your input. And so I always appreciate engagement, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. I think it's important because it keeps us and helps us hopefully be better. And so I just got some brief summary remarks prior to my presentation. First thing I want to do is just recognize it's Hispanic Heritage Month. We've done some work in our schools, obviously around cultural relevance and equity. And so I want to always make sure we recognize if we're in a specific affinities groups month, that we recognize that. So Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I want to mention, I did attend the Athletic Hall of Fame last week. A ton of history in the room, a ton of pride regarding Schenectady. You know, I learned about the swamp and the hill and, you know, all kinds of stuff. Great stories from great alumnis.
You're sitting in the swamp.
I know. I am in the swamp. But, you know, I think, you know, when you hear people talk about the impact of athletics on our children, it is real. As a former athlete, it's probably the best times of my life. So I definitely recognize the significance of it in our kids' lives. I also want to congratulate our girls volleyball team. They had a first-place finish in the tournament, which was held this last weekend. Great job, great work, Patriots. Our partnership with CDTAs is going really well. You may have seen an article today in the paper. It's actually helped us kind of stay ahead of the curve with the bus driver challenges and shortages. We've been able to, you know, have a slight, very minimal buffer. But if we get a lot of people absent, or, you know, anything happens, we could potentially have to have a different conversation as a community. So I want to just recognize the partnership is going well. Also want to talk, parent-teacher conferences, want to make a plug since everybody is watching and this is stream. We've made some decisions around the dates for our conference dates. They're going to be November 17th is a full day. November 19th is a half-day in the afternoon. And November 23rd will be an evening family conference. And we're going to communicate these as well through our social media, through our principals and the schools. There's also no school for students on the 17th because it is a full day, and also on the half-day on November 19th. So as you parents plan their coverages and their childcare, I just want to make sure, make that plug now. But more information will be coming from Karen Corona, our communications director, along with the principals as well regarding that. And the other thing I want to mention just real quick is, obviously, we know we're still in the pandemic. We still have COVID. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, we've gotten various feedback. Not a lot, but, you know, commentaries around reporting of cases. And please know that we do put it in the weekly brief. I'm more than happy to overcommunicate if that's not enough. If something that we want to talk about is board, I know in the past, the expectation was a daily reminder. You know, we are trying to be focused on in-person learning, while also communicating cases in our community. We are required to report it daily to the New York State Department of Health, and they do have the New York State Report Card. Unfortunately, they don't have that report card working for the public to view, which is unfortunate. But we do report it every day. So if the board would like us to make more of an effort to send it out every day, even if it's one case, two cases, I just want to be mindful that we don't stoke fear because many of the times, even though we have one case, we're not allowed to identify the person. You know, we're not allowed to tell people in that classroom that there was a case in that classroom. So there's still some privacy that we have to balance with it. So I just want to make that and try to be transparent with the audience and those who may be watching, that I do recognize that. I did get a couple of communications from parents. And no one's trying to hide anything. But the reality is, you know, we can do it every day, but I just don't know what's the comfort level here as we also try not to panic everybody, because we haven't had anything that was of significance to wipe out a whole building. So those are some of my comments, and I'll dig into more in my presentation.
Okay. Board members, Princella?
I also want to say Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. And I want to encourage everyone to please read the briefly, briefly, the weekly brief. It has a lot of information in it. One of the things I did want to highlight in the brief was the collage, collage, how do you say that? The Monopoly game, but it's got all the college.
College Oppley.
College Oppley, yes.
I think her name is Corinne.
Colleen.
It was a great creation. So I just encourage all the parents and all the students to make sure that they go by and check that out because it's a nice resource to see what's available for college, if that's what they choose to do. And just go see it, that's all. Thank you.
Erica.
It's board meeting day, y'all. It's an exciting day for us. So first, I just, you know, I think it's important for us to keep in our minds that it's awesome that the kids are back in school. Two weeks tomorrow. But remembering it is really hard for everyone. It's hard for the kids, it's hard for the teachers. I mean, I work in a school, so it's hard. They haven't been in school for a long time. You know, some of the speakers talked about socialization, that mental and emotional health and wellness. I think it's just important for us to keep in our minds as we're adopting policies and having discussions that it's not like two weeks, it's rainbows, butterflies, and unicorns, that like, it's hard. It's really hard. I also wanted to put a plug that the Kids Arts Fest is in downtown Schenectady, in front of City Hall on Schenectady. It's a great event for kids. There's so much to do. It's from noon to four, and if it's raining, it'll be in Proctors. And then, just piggybacking off something you said, Eyeball, is one thing we do at our school is we don't send out a daily brief of numbers because, like, people will stop reading our emails, but there's just a spot on the website that's updated daily that parents can click on and see. And so the information is there, but we're not like sending you 12 emails a week. And that's all.
Thank you, Erica. Noelani?
Okay, just very short and sweet. I think everyone's kind of touched upon the things that I was talking about or thinking to talk about. Just wanted to remind folks, anyone with children in the middle schools, that the back-to-school night is virtual, I believe, for Central Park at least, tomorrow night. I believe it's for all of the middle schools. So definitely make sure you can get online and greet some of the teachers. That's all I have.
Jamaica?
Hey, hey, y'all, I always say, and I can't even say always. So thank you to the last meeting, the folks that spoke. I actually didn't say it at the last meeting, and when I watched the video again, I said, I can't believe I didn't say thank you to everyone that spoke. And the reason is because whether you speak once or a thousand times, it takes courage to stand up in front of people and to say words, especially when it's something so important to all of you. So thank you to those that are sitting here, just as a witness and supporting those that spoke. And thank you to the individuals that did speak. I was able to attend a football game this last weekend. My son plays varsity, just out, thank you. We didn't win, but it's okay because it was great to see the players on the field and interacting with each other. And I know that my son is really happy to be able to be back out on the field again. So good all around, and how important sports are for our children. The other thing is there are the back-to-school nights that are happening. And if for some reason you cannot make the back-to-school night, whether it's virtual or whatever's happening, reach out to your kid's teacher, especially for the elementary schools, like at Zaller. Teachers are like, hey, if you can't make it, here's a Google Docs folder that has information. Please reach out if you have questions. So they're still working really hard, teachers are working really hard to make the information accessible, even if you can't make it for that specific day. Because we all have busy schedules, we have busy lives, we have a lot going on. So as important as it is to get that information, our teachers are really aware of that and trying to make sure there are no barriers and that parents have that information available. Also, thank you to the school district for keeping on the website the vaccination schedule that Schenectady County Department of Health has shared because I know parents have been asking for information and being able to say, here's a one-stop shop where you can find information that's important to you. Click this button here. Yeah, I think that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I wanted to remind people that there is an online auction to benefit the Working Group on Girls in Schenectady, and that benefits our students directly. So there's different ways you can support it. There's raffles, there's things you can bid on. And I would encourage anyone who might be interested to visit wgg-schenectady.org and check it out. And it will be happening in November, so I wanted to mention that. And then in keeping with the theme for tonight, which seems to be about athletics, I wanted to offer congratulations to Majestic Tyler of our football team, who was listed in the 9-19 Best of the Week in Section 2. So congratulations to him. We're very proud of him. And big congratulations to Shazim Pommal, who graduated in 2020 and is now running at Hudson Valley. He is the NGCAA Athlete of the Week as a cross-country runner. He, as some of you will remember, won the Grouse Run in 2019, the first Schenectady student to do it since, the first male since 1963. We did have a girl win in 1987. So really big congratulations to him. And that brings me to the fact that the Grouse Run is happening October 3rd. Ed Menace is, as always, looking for volunteers. It's a great day. It's a lot of fun. So if you're interested in volunteering at the Grouse Run, contact Ed Menace here at the high school.
Is that October 2nd or October 3rd?
3rd.
3rd is a Sunday.
Okay, then it's the 2nd. Then I wrote it wrong. And I was going to mention back-to-school nights too, so I think just encourage everyone to attend if they're able to do so. That's all.
Bernice?
Good evening, everyone. So a few things. On September 10th, Kathy and I actually attended a New York State School Board Association Officers Academy, and it was really insightful. Some of the topics that we had there were roles and responsibilities of the board officers, improving school board effectiveness, diversity, equity, inclusion in education, the foundations and introduction, diversity, equity, and inclusion in education, the board's role. And then myself and the Vice President of Albany, we did a panel discussion about how we're using DEI in our school. And that was Vicky Smith from Albany. And I'm sure that Kathy's going to talk a lot more, but we learned a lot of great information there. And I do want to thank Mr. Salet and Dr. Patrick Jean-Pierre for providing some of the information to help guide that panel discussion. It was extremely helpful. And then on September 11th was the Caribbean Day. Had a lot of fun. We had a lot of students there. We had ROTC actually performed at the beginning of the event around 11:15. And then we had some dancers from Oneida, Mount Pleasant, and it was another school, and I want to make sure I don't miss it. Oneida Mount Pleasant and Van Corleere, some dancers, some of the dancers did like a cultural dance at the event, and that was great. And again, I just want to highlight that there were several vendors there that were, again, graduates from Schenectady. They had Kimberly's Fashion, and she has, and she graduated from Schenectady, and she has a shop on Altima Avenue. And then you had Vibes Lounge. They did a lot of the music, and they also did, they also had a vending booth there as well. So it's just great to see our students and community leaders really have a nice time and just be able to highlight the things that we do in Schenectady. And actually, Mr. Salet and Dr. Coto were also there, and I know that Jamaica was there, and also Kathy. So it was a really, it was a nice event. I also wanted to mention that on September 18th, there was a Community Give Back Day at the YMCA. That was really, it was really good. They had a bunch of vendors from all over Schenectady, and there were some from Albany. And these vendors ranged from mental health booths to social-emotional, to insurance, how to get insurance, how to sign up your students or your kids to save for college. I mean, there had to have been at least 20 vendors in that, in the auditorium at the YMCA. And then they had a little activity where all the community members, whether they're parents or, you know, students or families, they had to go to at least, I believe it was about eight or 10 different vendors and get a little star. And once they do that, if they would like, they can go, they can leave with groceries. It was, it was an awesome event. It was really, I thought it was very nice. And the number of our students and our families that attended were really great. And also another piece there, and I think you can look on the YMCA website, there were many organizations that were hiring. So if you're looking for, you know, an extra job or a position, I believe on the YMCA, the Schenectady YMCA, you can go on that website. And there were many organizations that were also offering positions or jobs. And I also attended September 18th, the Schenectady High School Football Game against Shaker. It was great to see how supportive our students were and how excited, and I was excited to be out. It was a gorgeous day. So it was awesome. It was nice. It was nice to be out there. It was nice to see the cheerleaders, you know, also doing their thing. So I really appreciated all the hard work that everyone did. So that was awesome. That was great too. And I do want to just mention again, Hispanic Heritage Month. There's not a lot going on in the Capitol District area, but SUNY Albany is going to have an event on October 1st and October 2nd. And that's a U Albany Performance Art, and they're doing kind of like a showcase on flamenco dancing that comes from Spain. And I'll pause there, and that was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I think I've been covered by all the comments of everyone else. It was a busy, it was a busy couple of weeks. And I did do the board officers training. It was supposed to be a refresher course for me, but at the same time, I really learned quite a bit of new information in regard to things there. I was sorry I couldn't get to the football game because it was such a nice day. I was doing New York State School Board Association meeting and was holed up in that all day, where I also learned quite a bit. It's been most informative fall, but taken it that bad. Speaking of fall, today is the start of fall. I just thought I would take note of that. Okay, so we're going to move on to the presentation by Mr. Salet. Am I at the right place?
You are correct. Good evening, everyone. Did I, did inform the board that I'd come back with kind of an update? It's a new practice for us as a board and a superintendent that I would provide kind of presentations every time we meet, anything on relevance in terms of things going on in the district. So, Chris, I just got to turn it on, right?
Yes.
Again, just want to stay grounded in what we always are. So, you know, for those of you who may be attending for the first time, you know, I think it's always important to be grounded in our vision and our tag and our values. So you can obviously see that. We'll always have this as part of our presentations, our pillars, which should drive everything that we do. This is a strategic plan that the board adopted back in 2019, and so it drives our work. And so, you know, whether we're talking about facilities or we're talking about welcome back, you know, each one of these pillars is a part of that work. So I always like to make sure that we always show that off. But let me jump to what's probably most important, and that's back to school. And so, you know, we're back in, you know, we are plugging away. And I want to, you know, echo Board Member Brock Myers' comments regarding, this has been extremely difficult and hard work. Every day, there's a variety of variables that we're dealing with, whether it's attendance, whether it's student attendance, whether it's managing protocols and trying to keep kids safe as best as possible. And so our teachers are working hard. They're trying to keep kids engaged. They may have to quarantine, unfortunately, and trying to work with kids in front of them. And so I do want to make sure that we recognize that. I also want to recognize our administrators, who continue to make sure that they try to provide the most optimal learning environments and the safe. And everybody's working hard. You know, we're still registering families that continue to show up in our district. And so we may get an influx of migrants as well that come into this community shortly. So, you know, we're going to be prepared for them. We're going to welcome them and keep working hard. But I do want to tell you, I visited a bunch of buildings, went to a couple more this week. Been trying to get to three to four every week so that I can get to the district over a course of three weeks and then restart that cycle again. So you can see some pictures here, see some students that welcome back to Yates. They have a nice little sign there, Yates Elementary. I mean, our teachers, and they have all kinds of ideas on how to engage kids. And you're right, there's a lot of socialization that was missed over the last 18 months that we are being real intentional about. And so sometimes that comes with challenges and retraining behaviors and how to transition and some of those things. And so our staff continues to work on those things, again, trying to make sure we provide the best environment. So I mentioned in my initial presentation at district, you know, we would have the goal of chronic absenteeism and looking at attendance. And so, you know, I will always be transparent, whether the information's good, bad, or indifferent. You're going to hear it, and you're going to learn it from me or know what we are. And so average daily attendance means the student is present at some point in the day of the school. And these are our numbers. They're not anything to be extremely proud about. We have work to do here. We're going to be working on it. We're going to continue to work on it. And so what I would tell our parents who are in the audience, or parents watching, or community members, there's no reason for kids to really be home at this point. Our doors are open. If you need help, reach out to us. If there's a reason why the kid's not coming to school, let us know. You know, even when kids are quarantined, we still have to find ways to provide meaningful contact and some form of instruction to take attendance. So these numbers are just kids aren't engaging. These numbers are kids are not being present. And again, I will continue to bring updates on attendance. And this is average daily, so we'll be getting deeper into this conversation around chronic absenteeism, which is the number of times you miss, and then starting to look maybe period by period for secondary students so we know if there's kids leaving or, you know, some of the challenges may come there. So again, we're going to work on this, and, you know, some of the... So again, we're going to work on this, and, you know, some of the stuff that we're going to do with our American Rescue Plan funding is going to feed into this. And so our magical number is $41.3 million that we have to spend over the next four years. We have not received any of this money yet, so I want to be clear. So we can't receive the money until we had a plan in place, until the board was aware of the plan. And obviously, you're going to see some of the major components of that plan tonight. And then it's due September 30th, and then the hope is that then we get allocated our portion. And again, it's $41.3 million over the course of four years, so that's about $10 million a year or so. I thought it was important to show you a summary before we dig into the weeds of it a little bit and try to pull some of these apart and how we got to some of this information. I want to thank our budget staff, Taryn, I don't know if she's in the audience, worked extremely hard with our grants individual from Capital Region BOSI's Nancy Morrison. They took all of the input from 17 campuses and helped put together the next couple of slides you're going to see. But what it comes down to is these are the major categories of where this money would be spent over the four years. And so professional salaries, obviously, paying for increased social workers, increased counselors, increased tutoring, teachers', you know, enrichment, increased dollars for coaches to work with kids. That's, that type of money there on the professional salaries. Support staff salaries, increased paraprofessionals, teaching assistants, you know, that's where we find the support staff. Purchased services, which means going out and getting some contracts for various community-based organizations to help us do some of this work. Because as the one speaker said, we don't have a lot of capacity, and our staff is really stretched thin, and so there's only so much we can do with them. So we're going to have to go out to the community, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, any other grassroots-type organizations that want to respond to, you know, requests for proposals to do this work. Supplies and materials, which cover a variety of things. Employee benefits, because we are paying for staff salaries, so we do have to pay for their health coverage. Indirect costs is usually a very small amount that's taken to basically, you know, pay for the people who manage the grant, pay for the indirect costs to our, you know, budget department and to our grants facilities area. Our BOSI services is, again, that's something that we contract. We do get aid on that, so we'll get some of that back. And then some remodeling across the district. Facilities is one of the priorities in the, in the American Rescue Plan, to increase in-person learning, to improve ventilation, you know, things like that, so we've put some money aside for that. Equipment takes a variety of forms, and we'll dig into this in the next couple of slides. So this is really hard to see, and so I apologize, but we tried to give you a visual of all the categories that came from our staff members. So if you can zoom in, great. If you can't, again, I apologize, but I would recommend that you do it. We just color-coded everything that everyone was asking for from all the buildings. And again, a lot of hard work from our budget office, our grants folks, to really go through this, comb this data. Our accountability office helped kind of create a visual of this, so I want to make sure that they're recognizing this effort. And so you're going to see various things that are related to COVID, that are related to enhance, you know, things like enhanced library collection, furniture for, you know, better classrooms. Playground equipment was a theme that came up in every elementary school. And so we, we want the school's voices to be heard here, and so we made sure we did that. This is a larger visual of that pie, so you can kind of see. And it, these are color-coded by percentages, so you can see, you know, software, instructional supplies, SEL, professional development personnel, money for meals, things of that nature. So the next couple of slides, I'm not going to spend a lot of time because it is a lot of information, but for the board, every school is listed here and things that they thought were priorities. So as you go through the next couple of slides, you're going to see each school and where they put information that they felt was needed to support either the full return of students. So I'm going to just pick on Howe. So Howe said maximizing in-person instruction. Howe said they'd like to pay for staff to work after school with families, identify and remove potential barriers leading to the absenteeism to help increase in-person instruction. You know, Van Corleere talked about foundations program, math materials, manipulatives, makerspace materials. I mean, this is the voice of the schools. They had their anti-racism building leadership teams work on this. They had various stakeholders. You know, typically a parent or two is on that committee, some student voices usually on that committee if they do it during the day. And then also staff is on that committee, teachers, paraprofessionals, administration. And so, again, I'm not going to go through them all, but we included here, so we wanted you to see under the major areas that were identified by ARPA, what people were asking for. And so I think we've done a really good job to make sure that those voices are heard and are in our plan. So everything we did in the budget narrative speaks to each thing that each elementary school asked for. And then the middle schools have also provided some things. And some of these things you would think like they're simple, but we just never paid attention to them. And some of them like signage for hallways, classrooms, carts. You know, I'm not sure what mechanisms existed before, but we're going to use this American Rescue Plan to kind of hear that voice of the school and, and lift those things up. They wanted additional Chromebooks, more charging stations so that their kids could have access to technology. And, and some of this stuff is already happening through our E-Rate, and Chris has already, you know, our Chief of Technology has already jumped on some of these. So some of these will be kind of backfill items where we shift some of the dollars that we spend on our general fund and, and replace it with our American Rescue. One thing that I thought was really cool was, and the Mount Pleasant one, addressing impact of COVID students, including our demographics. They wanted to create some outdoor classroom spaces so that there's some safe spaces, some cool creative spaces. They have a nice little kind of courtyard area inside Mount Pleasant, if you've been there, and how to make that more of a classroom space. Because again, ventilation's important. You know, right now, we're dealing with a pandemic that is, is, you know, aerosol-based, and so we want to make sure we do that. When we look at the high school, which is the, I think I'm on the last?
The back one.
Back one?
Yep.
There you go. Thank you. So the high school has also identified stuff, so additional people, personnel, staff. So they want to assist the kids through the pandemic, a lot of trauma occurred that we haven't really been able to gauge yet. So we're still doing that work. We know that socialization was mentioned tonight by one of the speakers. We're seeing it with our kids. Getting back together in social studies, sometimes conflicts arise, and so how do we provide appropriate support? So that was one of the things that, that they asked for. Additional sections of math and ELA for specific classes, adding teacher assistance to help supplement grad lab. These are really creative, innovative ways to address these kind of areas. And to me, the thing that's most validating is it came from our schools. It wasn't a superintendent saying, here's what we're going to do. It wasn't district office saying, here's what we're going to do. We literally let them decide, gave it to us, and we, we filtered that material to try to synthesize and make it more universal. We also have Scala on here, Steinman's Career Leadership Academy. They've also provided some additional recommendations. We've even allowed our divisions, so our district office also had some requests as well to help support their work. And so, again, I'm, I'm not going to go through everything. You can kind of see it. But at the end of the day, what I want to make sure you understand is that the voices of the principals, assistant principals, teachers, paraprofessionals, building leadership teams was heard through this process. And so that's why we're submitting in September versus in August, because we asked for an extension, and obviously I didn't come on board until July, and so we had to do some backtracking and make sure that, that this was done. So these next couple of sections you're going to see is kind of what those earlier spreadsheet charts showed you and kind of the larger heading areas and how we came up with some of these dollars. And again, some of this is estimated because you never know exactly how many it's going to work out to. We may only need five sped teachers as opposed to seven. But we tried to work off of our summer enrichment program that we've done in the past and build fun, funding lines that are comparable and use some of those averages. And one thing I also want to say is we identified some, some potential partners in here. So, you know, obviously, we have to do contracts and work with them. So for example, when you look at summer enrichment, we're, we're referencing the MySide program, right? So they're a great partner. They're right in the city of Schenectady. They do some great things. Hopefully, they'll be on board to do this work, but we don't know for sure. And so we want to make sure that, I want to make sure that I put that out publicly, that it could change. Some of the partners in this work could change based on, you know, having a request for proposal process, making sure that there's no favoritism shown to certain groups and that we have some fairness and equity around who does what. So this is offering evidence-based summer after school and other extended learning enrichment programs. We're estimating over the course of, you know, the four years, two years of this being specific for summer enrichment, we're going to spend around 12 million. MTSS, in case you don't know, that's multi-tiered student supports. So that are like, you know, student support staff, counselors, social workers, mental health, various supports there. The next one is just a continuation of that, Bookmobile Books, teacher tutoring hours, community-based organization enrichment programs. Again, we're asking these organizations to step up and be a part of this work potentially. We added things like sicum, you know, food access is important. And so, you know, how can we use some of this money to, again, enhance our programming so we can feed kids after school? We can maybe give them some stuff to take home when the program's over, things of that nature. The next one is impacting, addressing the impact on all students and safely returning to in-person instruction. Again, kind of four high-level things. FTEs, in case you don't know, are full-time employees to support social-emotional learning. A parent and community engagement, you know, that's a big part of our work that we're lacking in, and so we have to invest some dollars in here to make sure we have parent centers in each of our schools, maybe parent liaisons in each of our buildings. You know, right now, we have about 4,000 hours that gets allocated to each school, and that's not a lot of time. When you think about 180 days of school, it gets up, eaten up pretty quickly. And that's with our Title I funding. So how do we take some of this American Rescue Plan and enhance parent engagement? And really maybe create a full-time parent liaison in each school so that there is an ambassador for parents when they walk in that they can connect with. So we can have parent centers where parents can come in and maybe access computers and technology during the school day and really look to use our schools as hubs. Maximizing in-person instruction, again, things like getting additional materials for education, additional FTEs to decrease class size. I think it's a great initiative that we should think about. You know, 30 kids in a classroom is a lot of kids, and that isn't the case, that's the case in some places. So if there's opportunities to decrease that, we should look at it. Now, obviously, there's a space capacity issue as well, but, you know, I think there's some creative ways that we can do that as we move forward. Additional teacher aides as well. We always know there's a, a need for support for individual kid support and also classroom support. Some of that is in our specialized programming and special education, but some of that is just teacher aides to run a, a lab so that kids can go in and maybe do some credit recovery online. Next is operating schools and meeting the needs of students. And, and so, you know, one thing that stood out to me, as I've visited every building before we opened the doors, and I'm glad to hear that principals recognize this, and, you know, this is like a wish list for them in the sense of like things that they wanted to ask for. Playgrounds, something that I thought was like low-hanging fruit. If we can take this money and really update our playground facilities at all of our elementary and then really change how we use our playgrounds, you know, right now, in some cases, we lock them. And so, you know, we really want to make our schools hubs for the community. I think one of the things as we upgrade is that we make them available to kids even after school so parents can bring their kids after school. And so, you know, there's safe ways to do that, not to say that, you know, we know things could happen, but I think we have to really look to find ways to open up our facilities to our communities.
Speaking of playgrounds, what was it, three or four years ago, we had a really touching and emotional appeal from a, a child who needed a barrier-free playground, and it was as if the light went on. We just do not have access for children who might be in wheelchairs or have some other disability at, at a particular point. So if we can build some of that in.
Yeah, so that was the goal here, is we would work with a, identify a vendor, help us work with this. And the goal that every playground would have an ADA accommodation so that kids could wheel up in a wheelchair. The same things could be used for kids not in wheelchairs or non-needings accessibility accommodations. But, you know, that's the goal here. We want to get state-of-the-art facilities for our kids to use. And then we got to work with our, you know, folks in terms of maintaining them. And I, I don't want to see mulch. I want to see the rubber, you know, the nice rubber. You know, I'm not a big fan of the mulch, but, you know, I think those are important places. You know, looking at repairing and upgrading walkways and outdoor spaces, you know, what? The first impression we make for many folks is what they see on the outside. So really taking some of this dollars here and looking to do some of those things. And some of this may be fluid, so I just want to be clear that these are kind of high-level categories. And that, like, for example, HVAC upgrades could maybe change depending on how much of a need we see. Upgrading our chemistry lab at the high school and making sure we have a nice place where kids can learn. Some of these were real specific to certain campuses. Some of these are just repair and upgrades. We know that there's a, there was a food service plan that was done at some point and presented, and so we need some dollars to support that plan. It's a great plan to modernize our kitchens. I know Board Member Miles, I'm sure your daughter will be happy to hear that, but, you know, really looking, looking at our kitchens and how to upgrade our kitchens. And this one's a little bit more of a personal, this last one. You know, I'm at Mount Pleasant every day. My office is there, and I would love to see that athletic field return back to a place where the community could use, engage, and it's reflective of high-quality middle school programming. You know, whether we look at a turf for our middle school kids so that we can increase the use of it all year round. The track, I mean, there's many community members that walk that while I look out, when I look outside the window or if I'm walking around.
Will we see you out there running?
No, I don't know about running. You did see Dr. Mason running after work one day out there, and so he was running out there, doing some physical fitness. But, I mean, we have a Boys and Girls Club that's right there, and so how do we capitalize on getting a great outdoor facility? We have all of our youth football programming using it there. So, you know, I really want to have a hard look at that facility if we're serious about athletics and giving our kids high-quality facilities to use for our programs. Again, educational technology is, we can't escape it. The pandemic's put a big magnifying glass on how we have to stay current. And so these are just a list of items in, in the world of educational technology. You know, I, I want to see you, Kathy, with some of these virtual reality goggles coming in.
Quiet. I'm ready.
Uh, next one is, again, implementing evidence-based strategies to meet students' needs. A lot of this stuff will work out of, you know, Mrs. Toof Freeman's office, social-emotional learning curriculum, foundations as, as part of the stuff that was requested at the elementary. Learning loss intervention, that's a, not a term I like to use, learning loss, more of disrupted learning given the pandemic. But we have to figure out what we're going to do to address it. We know that there's going to be gaps with our children, whether it's fluency, whether it's numeracy. And so how do we build this work? And again, evidence-based, meaning that, you know, we're just not going to get an idea that we heard at the barbershop, but we're actually going to find something research-based and things of that nature. And again, the summary is there for you to see, which is the culmination of the previous slides. And then just want to open up for any questions for the board.
I have one comment that the American Rescue Plan is, as Adivell pointed out, somewhere between three and four years in terms of how it will be given out to us. And so it's important that we not encounter a fiscal cliff, meaning that, you know, at the end of 2025, you know, we have nothing. And so many of these things are one-time purchases so that, you know, it's nothing that we have to sustain. And in the case of any personnel or hiring, those kinds of positions will have to be identified in that way. We're hopeful, of course, that we'll continue to get the foundation funding that the state, you know, has said that they will provide to us and that that will continue beyond those years. But we have to make sure that we're not over-committing ourselves so that we do and would encounter that fiscal cliff. So that's why you see so many sort of one-time activities and purchases.
Yeah, thanks for bringing up that point. The premise was that it was non-reoccurring expenses, and so that was the guidance within the federal. That doesn't mean you couldn't use it on staff, but what we tried to do is limit it and be strategic on staff. And so we know that if we do this work well and it works, we're going to have to figure out how we sustain certain things in the general fund.
Right.
But we want to make sure that over the next three to four years, that's our work now, figuring out how we address these things. And if we do these things well and they work, hopefully, some of these things go away because we've addressed maybe learning loss and things of that nature. But, you know, the other thing with this money, there's no language around supplanting versus supplementing. And so some of it could be used for existing staff that we have now. And so let's say we moved a portion of counselor salaries to this. We could do that. There's nothing against that. And so there are some creative ways that we are going to try to explore to, you know, maybe move some things that we paid in our general fund to this, and then as we come back, you know, we strengthen our reserve and we look at other things as well. So, you know, we're going to be having to navigate that as we move through this. But, you know, right now, the goal was to give you an opportunity to review this, see the feedback from all the schools, and then kind of our plan to kind of address it so we can submit it at the end of the month.
Now, do we need to approve this in order to?
No.
We don't, for you to submit it. Okay, so it, so it just submitted by September 30th?
Yeah, we're going to, the plan is to submit it by the 30th.
All right.
I was actually excited to see that there were full-time staff as part of this plan. And my thought process was actually specifically, the ARP is coming in, but also we do have coming in the increase in state funding from New York State after fighting for 10 years to demand that our schools be fully funded and that the legislature has indeed put in place a plan for how to make that a reality. So for us to, in some confidence, be able to move forward and say, we know how important it is to decrease class sizes, like you stated, increase staffing in all of the different areas that will support our students, and to be able to do it in a way that says, okay, we've got this money coming from the federal government. So I was excited to, to see that, because in previous conversations, the, well, this isn't for reoccurring costs, so that, I was, yay! I did have a question though, a couple. For the summer enrichment, has there been any conversation about extending the number of days for the program, not just what is done during that time? And I say that as a parent. And I say that as a parent, who has children that have been in the summer enrichment program, but also who has heard from other parents what we face on a regular basis every summer that if the program lasts for four weeks, but the school summer program is eight, like, it's a, it's hard, especially for working parents, for low-income parents. So if there's any consideration on extending how long the summer enrichment program is.
So I would say that is really around our facilities, and so one of the things we have to get ready for fall to reopen and get kids back, clean buildings. So I think, you know, I mentioned partners in this work. So we think about like, I'm going to pick Museum of Science. If they can host it on their campus, you know, it's really up to them as to how long. And I think some of this will have to flush this out and really try to figure out some creativity, but that's good feedback to think about, because then we can guarantee kids kind of more uninterrupted learning all summer and then transition into fall. But for us, having it in our buildings is that, you know, our principals get anxious, like, oh, I got to get our buildings ready, I got to get our custodial staff gets anxious about cleaning and scrubbing, and so it's really hard to do that if we keep them in our, in our, in our buildings.
The other question I have is on the ability to make adjustments based on information and identified needs after the money starts to come in, right? So we've, we've got this plan in front of us, and this is kind of our best guesstimate of, hey, we think these are the priorities. I, I hear very strongly from you that the building leadership was heard, the building leadership was heard, and there were one or two parents, one or two students, which means there's another opportunity to engage parents and students and get input from those barber shops, because our communities are very aware of what are the things that their students need. So yes, there's, there's data and statistics on things that work well in schools, but don't discount the barber shop, especially here in the city, I'm just saying.
I don't go no more, so you know, I'm good.
Yes, you don't have to go to the barber shop, but the barber shop and the salon, we sit in there, we have these conversations, and our communities know very well what it's going to take for our students to be able to get through the gap that already existed before COVID hit.
Sure.
And that COVID made worse. So how, once you submit this, my question is, after I said all that, once you submit this, is there some directive around, hey, we know this is your plan right now, but if there's a need for a change?
Yeah, so the process to change with any grant, because this is technically treated as a grant, is what they call an FS-10A. So the, that's basically the budget documents called an FS-10, and an A is the amendment. So we are always allowed to go in, readjust, does take a little bit of an approval process, so we try not to do too many of them, because then you're dependent on state ed reviewing it and things of that nature. So yes, there's always an opportunity to adjust as we continue to go on, and we know that what we wrote now here may not be the same needs in year threes and potentially year four. So we're aware of that, and so the goal for me is every summer, we figure out a way to reengage, monitor, reassess, make some tweaks. And, you know, I love barber shops, so I want to make sure I make that plug.
Yeah, I was going to say, they're watching right now.
No, no, and it's been a long time since I got a head jump, but you know, I will say we will definitely have some community voice be here, and there was some data, and again, probably not the best, but there was a survey that was done prior to my arrival that was on for quite some time. Obviously, I know you've had some challenges yourself around how we survey here, but I do want you to know that there was maybe a couple hundred respondents from families at that time that was also included in this as well. So that wasn't clear that there was some historical data that we used, as well as the building leadership teams with their families and communities as well.
Well, maybe you can engage folks to create a new survey that actually is based on what the community needs are. My last, it's just a comment, yay for playgrounds and for the accessibility being accessible in all ways, right? Like the both and of you and Kathy talking, that the community having accessibility, because Malia, who saw you at school and told me, she texted me, I saw him, she actually does an assessment of playgrounds in not just the city of Schenectady, but has now ventured out into Albany, and has noted that some playgrounds she couldn't get onto the playground at the school buildings, and others she could, and she said, mommy, why? And I said, I don't know, I'll go ask that guy. So I get to ask you publicly, but you already answered. So that community accessibility, I think, is important, as well as what Kathy said, differently-abled students, which is something, I thought Kathy, maybe you watched Malia's live, because she actually does live videos of different parks, and she spoke about the fact that they're not accessible for all children based on age and ability level, right? An elementary school student that's five is different than one that's ten or eleven. So I, I think it would do a lot, and yes to the rubber mulch, because would chips suck?
I think one of the saddest things I've seen during COVID was seeing that swings had been taken off of their hooks in parks that children wished to visit, and I think that was mostly in the city parks.
And the yellow tape.
But I know that, I know that, you know, under COVID restrictions, we were obligated to yellow tape them or do a lot of that, so. Are there other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a quick one. Do you have a sense of the timeline after this is submitted?
I hope next day.
No, but after this is submitted?
Yeah, I don't, so we submit it on the thirtieth, I don't know if Taryn can maybe speak to timeline after we submit, but I would assume they have to review it and then, so probably usually a month or so after we submit, we should get something. We did get the other federal money not too late after, so we, we think, yeah. So this is a priority grant, because the feds have only given a certain amount of window, and they want us to start using it. And again, the whole point here is that we have in-person learning with this money, and so they know that we need it to maintain in-person learning, there are some HVAC, so I can update the board as soon as we get our first allotment.
Instead of learning loss, I heard it referred to as unfinished learning. Any other comments?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple of questions. On slide twenty, when you listed some of the positions, and I think it's great, the SED teachers and the ELL teacher, English Language Learners, and the teaching, teacher aides, I'm wondering, because these are, these are areas that I know for the last few years, people have shared that we really need these supports, so I'm wondering how, and maybe it's premature to ask this, how is it going to be determined where these positions are going to be placed since we have so many buildings?
Yeah, so we're using the summer enrichment model that has been currently in place.
Okay.
And so we just kind of expanded that to touch more buildings, more schools, more programs, and increase the staffing for that. So we work with Simone, who does our Twenty First Century, you know, enrichment after school. So we haven't gotten into the specifics of this in terms of how many, but what we tried to do was take how many we had now, multiply it by three locations, so that's why you see the times three there. So we've just basically taken what it is to run one site, multiplied it by three, with the goal of trying to increase capacity and increase programming like arts and dance and swim lessons, things that we know are important for when it comes to summer enrichment. So I think it's going to be more something I can answer as we get closer to the summer, and we start to develop them, we start to market them to try to get parents to sign up, you know, because these are going to often be enrichment, which means they're not like for, like credit-bearing, they're not, you know, they're not going to be things that summer school, like the old traditional model of you failed, you got to go to summer school, these are enrichment opportunities.
And then the other question I have, because we've had a lot of capital projects, right, and a lot of renovation that's happening in our buildings, so I noticed here we have several parts, you know, slide ten, I believe, talks about infrastructure improvement. Then we have another slide that, again, talks about fixing our facilities, which is great. So I'm wondering, just for, for me to be clear, the capital project fund focuses on certain aspects of the building, and then what we're doing with this money is that we're going to be fixing things that the capital project fund will not.
Yeah, so the capital projects usually require a larger, more significant process. So this is going to be the ability for us to say, hey, we know that the windows in this area are no good, let's go out and put, get a vendor, and let's address it without having to do a project vote. You know, the capital projects are larger, you know, require taxpayer input. This is going to be an infusion of dollars to just upgrade our facilities that we know that we have. I also want to mention, and you will get it later in a later board meeting, but we're going to be reviewing, we put out an RFP through the business office for a building condition survey, we're required to do that every five years. And what that does is that basically gives us an assessment of all of our buildings, and that goes through everything, ventilation, windows, and it says, you know, you need to replace this now. So that is something that we may accelerate so that we can get ahead, and so when we get this dollars, we can start addressing some of those things. But I can tell you, you know, you walk, you talk to principals, they'll tell you where all their needs are in their buildings. And we know that there's some that we just didn't get to through capital projects, one of them being some of the kitchens, and so that we know was one of the areas as well. But other things are facility slash type athletic upgrades, like making sure we have fiberglass backboards in our schools. I mean, 2021, we still got old, you know, the old-school Hoosier backboards and something, nothing wrong with it, but you know, it's time to kind of figure out where we can modernize, where we can update, making sure our cafeterias look very welcoming. If you go to, if you have a chance to go to MLK and check out their cafeteria, it's amazing. I mean, the principal's just glowing because she's got a projector that goes down, she's got a speaker system, kids have new seating, you know, some of the stuff will be classroom-related too, some of it was furniture that we put in here to say flexible seating, flexible furniture, so that teachers have some options, you know, really looking at some of our spaces. So we don't have that list yet, Bernice, in terms of what it is, but the goal is to get the building condition survey probably started earlier, get ahead of it, start figuring out what these projects are.
So, so, I mean, just as a reminder, of course, we did phase one of our capital projects, which were primarily directed to our middle schools. Phase two has been primarily directed to elementary schools. Phase three was to be directed to the high school, and of course, all along the way, there are always these sort of emergency things that you have to, have to fit in. So we'll be meshing, I guess is the word, I would like to use the look at, at phase three with what we have planned here, and of course, then we had planned phase four. And, you know, I'll be long off that board by the time, office board by the time we would start circling around after phase four, but
Yes.
This seems to be a perpetual process, that's my way of looking at it.
The new building condition survey will actually inform our next capital project, which will be where the, you're probably more familiar with that process, where we put it out to vote, we get, you know, community input, and so that has to occur as well, because we want to stay on that cycle. And again, there have been some previous capital projects, but to me, I think the building condition survey, this money will supplement, will augment, hopefully what that is. You know, and we do have to talk about our, some of our facilities, need to get, go back through the phase ones, there's some things that didn't get done, and so although we know the high school is probably one of the ones on the last phases, we have to talk about what we do here as well.
I made an assumption that, you should never make an assumption, that this would give us an opportunity to, to inject more equity, right? The thing that we lead with into the things that need to get done that aren't necessarily on a plan already right now. Like, I love every time you say the Mount Pleasant Field, I went to that school. So when I see the track, I'm like, this is an equity issue, the fact that that track and field have sat there for years in disarray was because of the location and it wasn't a priority. So being able to invest that type of equity into a, a building that serves, you know, that community, that's kind of how I was seeing this, this money.
And you're right.
It gives us an opportunity to put equity with resources, like for the playgrounds, like what could potentially happen additionally at MLK that has all of that land back there, also the school I went to, that, you know, how can we enhance that and that type of thing? I mean, but it was an assumption I kind of made was, oh, well, we build on equity, so that's kind of how this can allow us to use resources to actually lead with that.
It's an appropriate assumption, so it was a good assumption, so no one, no one looks bad here. And just the fact that, like, we put that specifically in here because we know there's a need there, and although you guys did monetization or capital projects, that was never talked about, which, you know, again, you know, we, we have a charge here, I have a charge, Carla, Dr. Coto has a charge, tonight you'll potentially be appointing the new director of athletics, they'll have a charge around elevating our programs, our facilities for children. And so, yes, the assumption is correct, and it was equity-based, because if we don't intentionally say we need to do the athletic field track, it may fall off a plan down the road.
I do have another.
Did you have something else?
Yeah, so in terms of, I, I love the decreased class size, but I'm going to mention, like, this is over twenty years ago, and I can't remember the monies that we received. At that time, I was a teacher, I remember that our classes did reduce, so we had like sixteen to eighteen students, and then a few years later, it went back up to about twenty-eight to thirty-two, because the money wasn't there anymore. So I'm just wondering, and again, this could be very premature, but I'm wondering, because again, we know that this money is allocated, we have this money for about four years.
Sure.
So I'm wondering, and again, just throwing it out there, not necessarily an answer now, are we thinking about what happens with those class sizes when we don't have those funds anymore? Just so, because it was hard.
Yeah.
Going from eighteen to back to twenty-eight or thirty-two.
I think, I think what I would like to do is bring back to the board some areas that I think we should sustain long-term. Really in our pre-K K one, two, you know, we talk about reading by third grade, all the studies around reading by third grade and things of that nature, but we really got to protect class size down there, so teachers can make sure kids are fluent, you know, so it may not be something we do K to twelve, but it will probably be something that is aligned to achievement, aligned to outcomes, and, you know, that's something that we probably could sustain, you know, and so, you know, that's something we, we want to work with our partners, our, our teachers' union and folks, to make sure that we have a plan that's strategic. We want to be fair, we want to protect folks, but, you know, if we're going to get ahead of this work, we're going to have to make an investment, and I think the best investment is in the early years. And if we can do that well and really guarantee that, you know, I know there's some rules for pre-K grants around class sizes, but wouldn't, how powerful would it be that first grade could be, you know, no more than twenty, you know, second grade no more than twenty, and then the guarantee now is that by third grade, the kids should be reading, and by third grade, there should be, you know, so I think those are some strategic investments we can make that could be sustained long-term if we're smart about it. And again, back to the point that Board Member Miles made, you know, we, we're going to have to do some uncomfortable things and figure out where we find the money in our general funds, and again, we're going to be assessing, we're going to be analyzing, and maybe some of the facility needs that we typically would have had, because we've been able to address some things here, we may not need down the road, so how we use some of that money. But right now, you do have technically a decreased class size effort, you have a, like a general education continuing teacher, where you have two teachers in gen ed classes. So if you think about it, two teachers, thirty kids, is really a one to fifteen ratio, so that's an expensive model that has been done, but, you know, maybe revisiting where we do that as opposed to how we do that. And I will just make one last plug, because I know Kathy wants to move on with the agenda. We do have a, a building that's empty right now. We have to talk about that, Fulton, the Fulton campus, and so that's why the building condition survey is going to be real important, to talk about how we utilize it. But, you know, if you bring, you know, another small elementary back on, pre-K to five, two to three classrooms there, you know, that does help us decrease the class size as well, you know, and obviously renovate the place, make it look better, you know, get it back to being an open place. And so I think there's going to be a lot of opportunity for us to do some innovation, some creativity, some equity work that is grounded in this one-time non-occurrence.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think they called that increase in class size the gap elimination adjustment back in two thousand, two thousand and ten. Exactly, yes, I had a lesson in that myself. All right, the next thing on our agenda is the review of the 2021 proposed resolutions for the New York State School Board Association Business Meeting, and, you know, I don't anticipate a lot of questions or comments about that, but did anybody have any, anything on there? I mean, this, these are the resolutions that I'll vote on on October eighteenth as part of the business meeting, and I'd just like to, you know, solicit your input if you have anything regarding any of these. I will probably vote these as recommended by NISBA, and you both said that they have looked at it and find nothing particularly, you know.
Unlike in other years, or if I objected.
Unlike there, I didn't see where there were occasionally some things.
I think all these are good, I particularly like the ones involving monies for solar panels, equity in terms of funding, so there's, I think there are a lot of good proposals in here.
Good. Did you have any question, Bernice?
Yeah, I just had one for proposed resolution seventeen. This was from Freeport School Board. It's the second, is under rationale, and I, it's a wonder that I have, because I found it interesting. It says districts are put in a position of paying the legal fees for the complainant as well as their own legal fees if the hearing officer fines for that, fines for that complainant. And I was just wondering if that's something that we practice here in Schenectady as well? Yeah, this is a legal.
These are statewide practices that they, so yeah, I mean, we, we practice the same thing, so we would benefit if we changed that rule, which is why we didn't have any opposition to it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, then I'll proceed on that basis for October eighteenth. Now we're on to the discussion on the facility use, and I believe we've been provided with policy, somewhere I got, oh, it's got buried here, with our current policy thirty-two eighty, and you will see attached to that the usage form. Now, it's my understanding that there Now, it's my understanding that there have been, uh, there's been inconsistency in how the, how the facilities fee schedules were administered. Would you like to comment about that?
Yeah. So, again, you know, being new to the region and, and to Schenectady, you unpack past practice. And so, past practice was that there was a lot of deviation from what was written down. We heard some of our folks speak about various uh organizations being treated one way, others treated another way. And so, I'm asking the board to help provide me some guidance so that it's fair to whoever wants to use it. But I also think if it's rooted in our, if it's rooted in our kids and it's rooted in our athletic program, that we really should make it a Schenectady athletic use. And then there is no burden on those entities. But if it's someone who comes from, that their organization is registered in another county or neighboring suburban district, or the, the name of the, the title may not be anything to do with Schenectady City Schools or, or our youth program, that then they would incur a designated charge and that we maybe eliminate the non-resident resident piece and just have one flat rate that is fair to both because it's really hard to manage. How you define resident, non-resident, is it the kids being serviced, is it the organization where the organization is registered? And I will tell you that I've done an analysis of neighboring districts. And there's a reason why folks come to us that aren't in this community because we have uh been given various compromises for various reasons. And so, I want to try to eliminate that and make it really clear for our new director of athletics, for our, uh, for Dr. Coto and his office to help make sure that we increase engagement, increase our facility use. But for me, the priority should be our children, our kids, uh, our programs. If soccer wants to go all year round and the coaches are there to facilitate it, they should at first this before someone on the outside is willing to pay money. And that's kind of what I want to prioritize. But I need the board to help me provide the guidance and the authority to do it because right now it's, falls in your hands.
Well, I think reading through the document is interesting because it contradicts itself a lot. So, you were talking about, you know, on the back page when it's, you know, group one, Schenectady community group fees and then non-residents. But then either on the front page or the middle page, I think it is, it says, you know, only Schenectady residents can rent the facilities, right? And then on the, the pay scale, it has, you know, the Monday through Saturday price and then the Sunday school holiday price. But then on the second page, it says, school facilities are not available during holidays, vacations are unforeseen. So, I just think the, we really need to make sure, you know, is cohesive. In terms of the fees and stuff, I think, you know, I definitely agree, we need to be serving our Schenectady kids. And I think, you know, looking at a sliding scale, because there's a big difference between a youth sport wanting to use a facility for their practice versus for their games, versus AAU tournaments, versus adult leagues, versus a party or event. So, I think what it's for makes a big difference, you know. Having that same fee for someone who wants to come in and host a training for forty-five people is different than a youth soccer team who wants to use it for practice because the price is high. Their fees are going to have to increase and then a lot of our kids aren't going to be able to play. And that, you know, we talk about SCL, we talk about engagement, like sports really do make a difference. And I, I don't know, one parent said, you know, they can take it away and I'll just, you know. He kept me engaged in school because my mom, you know, she'd be like, you can't watch TV. I'd be like, okay. You can't go outside? I don't care. You can't play basketball? I'm, I'm sorry. What do you want me to do? I'll do anything. So, like, it really does have an impact in students' engagement. And so, I think looking at it in a, in an equitable way based on, you know, sliding scale, what's happening there.
Yeah, I think the one thing I want to also point out that I didn't say so, I apologize, is that some organizations charge a lot for participation in their programs. We know some don't charge anything because they're cognizant of the audience that they're servicing. But, you know, we do have a charge. Although the custodian may not be assigned there, they still have to go back in and follow up, make sure it's clean, make sure it's scrubbed, make sure it's dusted. You know, and that's their feedback to me. The custodians have to say, look, you're right, we don't have to be there. But they also have to make sure the doors are locked, it's secure, the facility's turned off, and they still got to run and clean the rest of the building. And so, you know, I'm okay with not charging anybody if I know for sure it's a Schenectady City School District endorsed program where there's a hundred percent of our kids there in there, whether it's with a coach or volunteers. But we do have organizations that are travel leagues that charge kids six hundred dollars a year, fifty, you know, whatever it is. And so, we're a nonprofit organization. So, for people to use our facilities at no charge, but then make a profit off of our kids or off of anybody is where the, the contradiction is here. And so, if we're truly about community and giving back, then I, then to me is, again, the director of athletics, Dr. Carlos's office facilities, to really be able to manage how they can know who to charge and not to charge because we just don't have the ability to go through and say, give me the address to the kids that are in there. You know, give me where they live, where does the person who runs the program live? So, that's the challenge I have with the residents, non-residents. But I will tell you that other communities do use that metric and they don't even go to it because their prices are two hundred dollars for a non-resident. And then, no one uses their facility, but they'll use ours. And none of those kids, you know, and I assume it's a, a really hot topic here in Schenectady, which I'm learning. And, you know, is it our kids swimming or is it, you know, counter uh district's kids swimming in our facilities? And then our kids saying, what about us? What about us? And so, you know, I know it's not comfortable, but I think if we're going to pri- prioritize our kids, I'd love to be able to do that and really be strategic on who we do that with and let it be our coaches, our kids first, and then figure out how we fairly open it up to everybody else.
I'm glad you said that because I know that um there's been a concern around an organization that uses our facilities, but only one Schenectady student is actually attending that program and they pay minimal to us. So, I think it is, it is important to really look at that and to see who the cli- who our clients are being serviced and are they our students, which are the clients. So, um, I do. And then another question I have because I know that we have outside fields as well, right? We have the, um, I don't know if it's still called the North Side LL Field, but that's something that also came up. And I don't know, in this facility use, I know it says et cetera on the, on the first page. Does that include outside facilities?
I think there's an inter- intermunicipal agreement with the city around like a one dollar fee. And it's a city fee, but they maintain it and we own it. So, I can look for that. I believe that North Side falls under that. Um, and that's technically a little league. That's with the city of Schenectady and the district.
I think at a minimum, we've got to update the use fee schedule since it says two thousand fifteen to sixteen. And I guess, you know, survey of our local districts around here might give us, you know, a baseline for, uh, you know, what we have. We shouldn't have words like et cetera.
There should not be words like et cetera.
Well, I don't know why not, et cetera. Anne, did you have something?
I just agree with everyone that these facilities should be for our students and families before anyone else. And if outside groups from outside Schenectady want to use them, they should definitely be charged a fee. And I know there was some accommodation because I used some of our facilities many years ago. Um, and they would say, well, you can, your girl scout troop can meet after school. And then the custodian, he'll clean the other rooms first and he hasn't cleaned that room yet. So, it doesn't matter.
Right, exactly.
Like, by the time you're gone, then he can clean it. So, I think there's also some accommodation that can be made for groups of our students in buildings that, you know, maybe clean that room last. So, if they're done at six o'clock, maybe they're still there.
I think that, um, I love how we're all in agreement that our students should be prioritized. And uh, full disclosure, I was a part of the Schenectady Soccer Club for a lot of years. No one in my family has played for probably four or five years. But she has complained for the last four years that she wants to play again. And being able to utilize the, the gym in the winter was absolutely critical. Oriana was part of the travel team. Um, Schenectady Soccer Club is not the only club that does this, but offers scholarships so that no child is denied because of the fees that are associated with it. And they themselves are a nonprofit and to the point of us being aware of which Schenectady organizations um are using our facilities and making them accessible because there are other clubs and groups and organizations that serve our, our children and are looking for an opportunity to expand their programs and serve more, more of them. And with our initiative to make sure that our, our children have those type of after-school programs. And I believe we had, you know, a, a PE teacher or something talk about how are we going to utilize and, and make sure that gym space is able to be used. It's a real opportunity for the community partnership that you've prioritized. I plus one everything Erica said about, you know, is it a sliding scale to be sure that um those who need access and are serving our students have that access versus the groups that are from other places and simply want to come here because it's cheaper and they're making a profit off of their programs. I, I, I think all of those things. And yay, there's a moment where we're all sitting here and saying, yay, let's prioritize our kids and find a way to make this work.
I also think there's a really good point some of our speakers made about how it helps our teams because they develop the skills. Some of our neighboring towns have these rec programs that we do not have in Schenectady. So, the kids don't have those opportunities. So, if there's a group in the community willing to come in and provide our kids with those opportunities, then that later helps us on our team sports and.
Schenectady Soccer Club is the only feeder program that our district has and has had for decades. The, I don't know if Paul is still involved with the club, but um has, has run it for a really long time. And it does, it allows our kids the opportunity to learn the sport before they get to middle school and be prepared and for us to actually be competitive when we're out on the field with some of those suburban districts that have been giving their, their kids lessons since before they could walk.
Have we answered the question though about the administrative ease of um putting this into place? In other words, um, you know, our, our ability to determine whether, you know, fifteen out of twenty kids are Schenectady students as opposed to, as opposed to five coming from, I don't know, South Colony, I'll call it, whatever. I mean, I, I know, that puts a burden on the office or the administrative staff or how do you feel about that?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's, that's part of my question is that how do we, so like, you know, the Schen- group one Schenectady community groups, you know, what is the metric to determine that? Because again, I'm not going to discredit that Schenectady Soccer is the right program for us to be an official designee and say, you, you never have to worry about this as long as you make sure it's a hun- you know, you know, but I just don't know what that metric is. And so, it's hard for me to validate, do I ask for rosters? Do I, you know, I need to know what the board is going to be supportive of because, you know, I uncovered a historical agreement that I don't, that I don't think the board was aware of with certain groups around, oh, we'll just maintain this. And then, we'll ease the burden from the district and you, you know, you don't have to worry about doing that. But that, those deals like that get us in trouble because then the next person wants to use it and they want the same deal. Or they want to know why they always get it and then they don't. And so, I'm trying to be transparent without identifying organizations because I want to respect, you know, historical practices that I don't agree with. But for me, it's got to be Schenectady kids, Schenectady community priority first. And what I would rather do is charge our, you know, potentially new director of athletics to say, designate the organizations that are the feeder programs to our programs, that prioritize them first. And if we're going to eat the cost, I'm okay with eating that cost because they're our kids. We can guarantee it. They feed into our modify. When basketball season's over, it's open gym run by either our coaches or with someone who's been vetted by our programs as a supporter and not making, you know, five hundred dollars on an AAU basketball tournament and, you know. And I, I think there's the room for that, but I don't think that has a defined charge, you know what I mean?
I think that some of our um existing community partnerships may, may come into assistance in that area, right? To be able to say, hey, you know, this is a conversation we're having about being able to open up the doors. What existing programs already are, you know, using space or who has already used space here and what do we know about them? This conversation also made me think about um CDBG grants that require residency for, for boards, right? Like, if you're getting this money, um, you have to have a board that resides in a very specific area. And what potentially could the application, right? We've got this, I forgot that the paperwork looks like this, my God. But what is it that the application process could look like that allows for additional information without it becoming too burdensome for administrative staff? But are there specific questions that can be asked? How many, you know, students are, you know, within the district or, you know, what communities do you serve? Is there a way to collect data that puts it upfront to say, hey, we're prioritizing? And being really transparent in the conversation, like, our priority is to ensure that our students and families are the first ones to have access. And we are going to make sure they get the space first. And if there's a conflict, it will be deferred to blah, blah, blah.
So, what I would like to do is we have um another board meeting uh on the twenty- October sixth and then again on the twenty-seventh. I'd like at least the opportunity to bring back a revised. I need a feedback from the board to figure out what are the next steps. I wanted you to hear from me that my belief is that priority should be to what you're saying. And so, I'm going to pick on them because they were in the audience. But a Schenectady Soccer is a community-based organization with a board that maybe lives in the city, Schenectady, they can provide rosters of kids. Maybe that's just some of the general parameters we put in. And then, we don't have to worry about a charge for things like that. But when you can't provide that evidence, then you fall on the regular scale. And then, you know, we still prioritize our district and kids first, our, our current athletic use. And then, our coaches and then organizations like Schenectady Soccer so that they can continue to provide the access that we may not be able to provide. And so, I would like to bring back by, uh, at the October twenty-seventh board meeting.
I think it would be the twentieth, wouldn't it?
Twentieth, right? The sixth and the twentieth?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, the twentieth. I'm sorry. I scrolled too fast. So, the twentieth, right, Martha? You know the dates by heart. So, maybe on the twentieth, I can bring back the proposed plan moving forward. And those that we had reached, had reached out to us, we can kind of work with them in the intermediary. I'll work with Dr. Coto, uh, and then the newly appointed director of athletics and then we'll move forward.
So, what, what happens to the fees? Where does that go when we collect them?
So, we, we have a budget account that's supposed to collect facility usage. Um, and it isn't much. But we do have an account set up. So, technically, that money comes back to replenish, uh, you know, cleaning materials, pay for the overtime. If we do have to bring another custodian onboard because some, maybe there's too many events going on, that's technically what it should be used for. It doesn't really generate revenue like, hey, you know, we're making money off of it. And again, we're, we're not supposed to. We're not proper. We're not trying to make money. But we're just trying to cover the cost of maintaining, you know, and our facility and our custodial staff.
As you pointed out, we, I mean, we, as many other school districts, are having difficulty getting custodial staff and, and maintenance people. So, the um, just as to your point about the money, uh, I, I am aware that there is a separate line item for the football field or soccer field or whatever. In, in terms of the fees coming back, it's uh put into a, a reserve account specifically. That was set up several years ago, so.
Yeah, and it's supposed to either help our athletic programming costs, our custodial costs. That's what it really, that money's used for. So, my charge will be to come back to the board with a plan to move forward. We'll update the language here that you see. And then, uh, the board policy doesn't need to be changed, but the, the facility procedure.
And, well, and the uh form, in terms of the fees and so forth will need to be updated.
We'll get rid of et cetera.
As far as we, as far as we know. Uh, okay. And we might want to update the uh policy to say that we adopted it or revised it, something for later, for more current than two thousand eight. Just so.
Yep, yep.
Even if we make no changes. All right. And the next item on our agenda is discussion on vaccination for athletics. And the staff has provided us this overview of red zone recommendations and vaccinations for athletes. And as you know, this is um becoming a significant, significant issue. Our football team was unable to play, I believe they did the same thing, were unable to play. They forfeited their first game um a week, a week ago due to a single, um, I think it was a single case from what I had heard. So, um, your thoughts on requiring vaccinations for athletes? This is um, and Niskiuna, I believe, has already done that.
Yeah, Niskiuna and Albany have already done that. Bethlehem has done that. Um, and there's a couple more that are slowly getting to that point.
Has section two made any comment at all?
Nope, they have not made a, a stance regarding it. They will support the decisions of individual districts since they are not technically a, a governing body that can require. It's got to be up to school systems to make it for their various institutions. What I'll say is there's two different sides to the conversation and I just need to know where the board would like me to go because athletics is an extracurricular activity. And so, we can impose whatever requirements we need to for participation. But that needs to be. But that needs to be a, a board decision and not a superintendent decision. And the one other thing that I know we're talking about athletes, technically things like band, chorus, theater performances are considered high risk as well according to the pandemic. And so some districts are even starting to include anybody who wants to be in a performance show or anything that would also have to be vaccinated because it's technically an extracurricular activity as well. So maybe a separate conversation, tonight's about athletes, but I do want to keep that on your radar as well. And so we provided you CDC language, New York State Department of Education language and the American Academy of Pediatrics language around what it says when you're in the high transmission rates. And technically we still read, we've been in red for quite some time. And so this did come to me from a parent and a board member and so I wanted to make sure that the board could deliberate on that.
Now the high-risk sports that we're talking about are basketball, cheerleading, football, hockey, lacrosse, volleyball and wrestling.
Well, that says just examples, there could be more.
I'm sorry?
It says examples.
Yeah, those are examples.
But those are, those are primarily the ones we have.
Yeah, those are the ones that they determine as high risk because there's more immediate contact, more median.
More breathing.
Right.
And we're in a, I, I feel like a, a unique position, but also a, a lucky one because we do have examples of what some other districts have done. Both Niskiuna and Bethlehem, it was part of their reopening plan. So they made the vaccination for athletes mandatory as part of their reopening plan. Albany, on the other hand, did it as a separate resolution that was back on August 20th. And examples of those are yay, board docs, everybody's using the same thing. So we're able to, to see that language. I mean, I feel like the question is, do we want our students to be able to participate and have an actual full season and be a part of these extracurricular activities? And sports has been a really relevant theme for tonight. And if so, what are we willing to do to make sure that that can happen? Because right now, the way it stands, because it's not mandatory, if someone tests positive, we saw, we, we lost an entire week for our football team versus if every player is vaccinated and someone tests positive, we still could field the team because as long as they're vaccinated and not showing symptoms, they can play. According to the CDC, we shouldn't even be playing right now. The CDC recommendation is that unless every player is fully vaccinated, if you're in high transmission, you should be virtual. So that's, that's kind of where I see us right now. And I want to make sure our players continue to have the chance to play, that when indoor sports hit us, and that's just around the corner, that we're going to be able to have those extracurricular activities as well.
So I'm just going to, oh, go ahead.
So do, do students have the authority to get vaccinated or do they need parent permission?
Yeah, you're going to still need parent consent unless you're over 18.
And so we have parents who don't want to wear masks. So we're going to punish students who, parents say, no, I don't want you to get a shot.
Yeah, so my, and I'll let everyone else talk. I have, I believe, a recommendation we could probably pursue that I think will give some opportunity for some fairness. Like, because right now we're still in football season, so if you make this recommendation, you want to think about when it goes into infect, when it doesn't go into infect. And, you know, I do want to be mindful that kids are in their senior year. So as a former student athlete, I would have hated to lose my season for something that maybe my parent may not be fully supportive of. And so I just want to be mindful of that. And I think that is a great point to bring up. I think there needs to be some education, some work, and I'm going to steal one of Board Member Miles's great points is that we probably should talk to our kids about this and we have now. And so we've been really big on voice and student voice. I know Board Member Miles is always reminding me about community engagement and voice. And I don't know, you have a son at home and so I know you'll make the decision for him, but, you know, it would be really interesting to talk to our athletes to see where they are with this because they may reveal some of the tensions that may be like, I'm down for it, but mom's not going to sign it or dad's not going to sign it. And I want to make sure our kids have the best season possible. So there's almost two battles that we go here. We do the best we can in the certain parameters and they are subject to losing games and participating. You know, they gave a heck of an effort against Shaker, but if they would have had their first game under their belt, they probably would have been a little less rusty, you know, a little bit, you know, you know.
What are the protocols for testing right now? In other words, from my perspective, how did the, how was the first student identified? Because we're not testing kids every single day. How is, how is it that, that this young person was identified?
Or was it a, a student? Because it, I don't know that it was a student and.
It was, it's my understanding it was, and Andrew can correct me because my memory is not the best at this age, I'm just kidding. But it was a sibling that was infected at the house that then ended up getting the player infected, who then ended up still coming to practice, not realizing it and then went home not feeling well, then tested positive, but because they were in a scrimmage, then had close contact, we had to basically quarantine enough of the team that we could not field the team. So the kid did not know he was sick, was with a sibling who was, did not stay home, came to the scrimmage, participated, went home and got tested. Andrew, you can correct me if I'm wrong. And then ended up realizing like, oh, I am sick, got the call back, we had to quarantine everybody. And because that's, it's too hard for them to tell who was around who for 15 minutes or less in terms of close contact. So we didn't have enough kids to field the team. So that, so that was that harmless situation, but that did increase vaccination. I think we got like 10 kids on the football team vaccinated as a result of that.
Two, like, it sucks they missed a game, but I think we're forgetting, one, winter sports are inside, so the risk is going to be higher. Two, they're quarantined, so what else did they miss? They missed school. So it's having an impact on their learning as well. And so we can't just think about it like, oh, games, like the community impact and the impact on their learning is big. And indoor sports is a much bigger risk because of ventilation, you know, basketball, wrestling, like you're on top of each other. So I think we need to remember too, it's not just, it's about athletics, but it's about the, the other impact it has when they have to quarantine because athletics are so closed, it's not like you can be three feet in a classroom and then it impacts those other parts of their life. That we're really trying to get them back in school and get them learning. So I just want to add that.
It's five weeks to be fully vaccinated, so I just want you, Andrew, right? Five weeks from first to?
Three, with Pfizer.
With, yeah, okay.
It's three.
Depending on which shot, it depends on the weeks.
Well, I, I mean, if they were to get their first shot tomorrow, you know, three weeks from now is the middle of October. I mean, we're, yeah, and when we're talking football, we're talking, you know, more than halfway through the season at, at this point, so.
But I don't think we're just talking football, right?
No, no, I know that, but I, I'm just saying in terms of, in terms of the effective date of when, when you want to do this kind, this kind of thing.
So Albany did October 1 as their date that they had to have everybody vaccinated?
They had to have at least the first shot, is my recollection.
Yeah, so that was the goal, so they aren't allowing any athlete to participate, any sports to continue until October 1 from their current policy.
So I, so it, I mean, it, it sounds like it's a, it's a toss-up, toss-up here in, in term, I mean, we can continue as we are, we can say, let's do it by October 1 and allow people to continue to play now under the same situation as they did, you know, when the first one, I mean, they may, they may end up being quarantined for some reason. I mean, if one, one person ends up positive.
Symptomatic, yeah, you have to be symptomatic.
Symptomatic and, and proximity has been too close, you know, they've been to too close proximity. So, you know, what, I mean, is that something that the board wishes to do is to, is to essentially mandate this October 1 is next Friday?
No. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think it's realistic or, or at all fair or equitable to say, hey, by next Friday you have to have this done. Even with how wonderful Schenectady County Department of Health has been with saying, here are the sites. They have a lot of pods. They also have at-home visits, like you can make a phone call and say, listen, I can't come to you, can you come to me? Like they are doing a lot to make it accessible and our district has been sharing information, so that's great. But at the same time, I think that an October 1 turnaround is unrealistic and unfair, but that we should choose a date and that we should move forward with ensuring that our students are going to be able to participate in extracurricular activities and that it won't have the negative impact on in-person learning. Because as Erica has pointed out, whatever happens with our sports, those students, if they test positive, you then have to have the conversation about what classes they were in, what teachers, what, how many, you know, where were they at all of these times? And they're not going to be in person. And right now, if they quarantine, they're not able to get the testing, right? So they're, they're quarantined for days at a time where, what I'm hearing is there's a struggle to get them the remote learning while they're quarantining, like that is, is a mess. So this allows us the opportunity to make sure they're able to participate in the sports that they want to participate in, that they can do it safely, that we ensure that we are doing what's best for the medical safety of the entire student body and all of our buildings.
I do want to interject though, I have some hesitancy. I think that we're, you know, we are teetering on some, and I understand that some school districts are making these decisions. These are very intense family decisions, student decisions. I like the fact that you've talked about student voice. I, I'm, you know, I do feel that we should be really looking at CDC, which we do, looking at the New York State Education Department, Americans Association of Pediatrics and using them as a guide to make our decisions versus looking at what other school districts are doing. We don't do that with other things. You know, I think that, you know, I'm vaccinated, but I do feel that this is a very intimate decision that families and students have to make that before, I have to pause because I'm still, you know, and I do, I do agree that we do not want our students outside of the classroom. We want our students to enjoy sports. I love soccer, I was left wing and I was a fast runner, you know? I love soccer and I played it in college. So I understand how important sports are, they were very important to me, but I also really value what our families and our students think. I just feel that as a parent myself, I, I don't know if I would want, I'm going to be honest, I don't know if I would want us to make that decision. This vaccination has only been out for a few years. I mean, I made that decision for myself and again, I, I do respect and I absolutely agree with the fact that we want our students in school, we want our students to excel, we want the, but I, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm a little bit.
I don't, but we're not making a decision that they need to do it at this point, that we're saying it's mandated for them. It, it would be, they need to be vaccinated to play, I think is what we're saying.
No, I understand.
As opposed, and, and they could make the decision not to play.
No.
So it's either vaccinated?
Sorry, I apologize. So I don't look at it as a decision not to play, I think it's being forced. It's, it's being said, this is what you will not do because you chose, and, and it may not even be the child's choice, like, you know, and about that, it could be the parent who is saying, absolutely not, you're not getting vaccinated. So I don't think it's a choice that they can't play, I think it's being, it's a, it's a mandate, we're saying, this is, this is what you will do in order to participate in a sport. So I think it's a very fine line and, and I've been quiet on it, but I don't think, you know, like you say, that it's a, it's a choice for the student at this point.
So we've, we've had mandates. I want to remind everyone that students have to be vaccinated against 11 diseases before they step foot in our school. 11 diseases. I have a friend Natalie who had polio, she is 87, she has post-polio syndrome. We don't see that in our generation because we got the polio vaccine. I know this is different than that, but I come from, I am not the only person on this board who lost a loved one to COVID, I know that. But I just, and I, I have another friend who lost her 30-year-old son to COVID in Saratoga about a month ago. And this Delta variant is so challenging. And I know we had a student last year who was so ill and ended up at, at Sunnyview. And quite frankly, I wish the state would mandate it for everybody in all our buildings, adults and students who are eligible. Because this is a public health issue and it's become so politicalized and it's a public health issue. And, and so I'm just, I'm really struggling with this because, did you see all the flags on the mall of representing the people in our country who died of this? So I just, I'm really struggling because how are we going to feel if we lose one of our students or one of our faculty?
Are we mandating our staff to get?
Yeah, so I, I do want to add to Ann's point that, you know, the, the state governor has mandated that teachers be vaccinated, staff, all staff, custodial. And we're in the process of having all of our staff submit evidence and then if not, they're going to have to be subject to weekly testing. We just did training today around what that's going to potentially look like with the swab. And so there is a mandate right now for staff, either you're vaccinated or you get weekly tested. So, you know, right now, you know, there's a, you know, what I would tell you all is we use the CDC guidance for a lot of things. We, we went by it, we didn't question it. So my advice to the board is this is a discussion right now, so there isn't a resolution on the floor, you know, so I want to make sure we're clear here. You know, I do think we need to have some conversations with our athletes, me with them, their coaches, you know, that'll be the charge after this conversation, knowing where the board wants us to go. But I would tell you, if we just look at the guidance.
It says vaccination.
It says vaccination, and so.
Or the one thing it does say too is, or weekly testing, right? And so I, I definitely hear and feel for what Prinsella and Bernice are saying too because even if a kid wants to get it and their parents are saying no, like, that sucks.
But the weekly testing is for low risk.
Right, but no, no, so listen, listen, right? I'm going to put my solution focus counselor hat on, Andrew, you see, you know what I'm doing here. So why, so with the, the presentation you did with the APR, is that right?
ARP.
Boom. Why can't we figure out a way to partner with the community organization for our athletes who just can't get vaccinated? So they, to be able to play, they have to provide a weekly, a negative COVID test weekly, right? So we're putting that safety barrier in. We're not excluding the kids who their parents just won't let them even though they want to. And we're trying to be as safe as possible.
But the, the question becomes when they do, if they do test positive, what happens then? Does that close down the entire team from being able to play?
Well, it could because, like I said, you could have a team of 40 football players and 10, 10 are vaccinated, 30 of them are not.
Yes, that's the individual, that handles it from the individual aspect, but it doesn't handle it from the team.
And I appreciate it because I am someone who always advocates for hearing the voices of everyone that's involved. I'm also someone who advocates for data and information and this is a medical issue, right? So I lean heavy on the science and the medical professionals who are, are saying this is what's necessary. So putting up the, the New York State Education Department, they're not medical professionals, like their recommendation is their recommendation and I would assume that it's based on some form of medical information they receive from someplace else. But the CDC is absolutely, those are medical professionals. And we, we have a, a duty to take the information from such professionals, right? It is, is their charge, it is their wheelhouse. I am not a doctor, but we have information from doctors. And we do have testimony from those who have been impacted by COVID. It is, it is real, it is in our own community. We lost a powerful community leader in Schenectady to COVID. And the median age of hospitalizations is getting lower all of the time. It is not just the elderly that's ending up in hospitals, it is unvaccinated younger people in their 30s, in their 40s, in their 20s that are in hospitals. So with the medical information that we have and our charge and duty to the safety of our students and our staff and with the governor putting out a mandate for staff, I, I think we need to come up with a solution that prioritizes vaccination and allows for a transition that does not preclude those that have type of transportation barriers to be very intentional in getting information out so they know how to get the vaccination for those that will. And while it is currently a choice for, for parents to say whether or not they will allow their children under 18 to get the vaccination, Ann's right, vaccinations are mandatory for all of the diseases that used to destroy our communities. And this one is not any different because while this vaccine has only been available to us for a shorter amount of time, is built on a. amount of time, is built on a science for much longer than its lifespan that exists. This is called COVID-19 for a reason because the science around this particular virus existed. One of the reasons that the scientific community was able to respond as rapidly as they were was because of the science that existed before it and because of the resources that were put into ensuring that we got a vaccine because everyone was being impacted regardless of their geographic location, their income, their race, except for the disproportionality that has impacted our black communities and our communities of color, just like everything else. And the same has been here in the city of Schenectady, that those communities of color and our communities that face poverty every single day are disproportionately impacted by COVID. Here we have an opportunity to ensure that we further lift up their safety when they enter our buildings and they are part of our programs. It's our duty and our charge.
So, on the CDC website, um, it's not on here, but it does say promote vaccination, right? It doesn't say it mandates it yet. I understand that the governor has mandated for staff at school and we are, we are, we are, we are abiding by that, right, rule because that's something that now has come out. So, what I, what I'm saying is that CDC, and if you look on that website for K-12, it says promotes vaccination, it hasn't said mandated. Now, when that changes, then that's when I think that we would move into that direction because the medical experts are telling us that that's what they, they break, they mandate or they recommend.
Is that for, is that for sports, though?
It's that, well, I know it was under K-12.
I mean, yeah, CDC uses the language, recommends, recommendations are as follows, so it's right on your, this is right from their, their language, so.
That you cancel unless all participants are fully vaccinated.
And again, these are their recommendations, so.
Yeah, their recommendations, not mandates.
Right, right. So, I, I think, I think we can deliberate, you know, at, at all points. What I would like to say is, we have a board meeting on October.
Six.
Six. You know, let us engage kids, let us reach out to parents. We already met, Andrea and I, around, uh, bringing the mobile, uh, vaccination clinic. Andrea, was that the right terminology, the mobile clinic, the vaccination clinic, right to the school?
They were here over the summer, several times.
We were talking about doing a partnership and really making a concerted effort for our athletes, if we mandated, we'll bring them over here so there's no barrier for transportation, park it out here, get the athletes out there after they get consent.
And I think you need to include those arts students who are in high-risk activities as well, and we also need to make sure students who are thinking about doing basketball or some winter sport need to be informed.
Yeah, I just want to have time with the team to huddle up, to look at timelines of what that would be, the window, so that we could say, potentially, I can bring back to the board for consideration, a resolution that says by this date, you need to have one shot, by this date, you need to be fully vaccinated, to be fair to some of the barriers that we know may have. And then if the board does not want to vote on that, then obviously you can make that decision as a, as a group and deliberate, but I think we need to, my point of bringing us here was to say that this board has to make that decision because there will be a policy that would change around extracurricular activities, it would be a requirement to participation. And so, I would at least like to spend the next couple of weeks to have the athletic department talk to the kids, figure out what some of their challenges may be, reach out to those, uh, parents, get a calendar of when the winter sports start so we can see, because right now, we're in fall, so I think it's a little bit too late to maybe impact that, but we could start that because many of those kids are multiple sport athletes. So, as they get ready for basketball, as they get ready for, you know, indoor track, you know, things that volley, you know, the things that happen indoors, well, volleyball's going on now, but, um, you know, the indoor sports, that we start bowling, you know, I know bowling's not high risk, but if it's participation in extracurricular activities, it's going to be all of them. So, like, again, it's the have, you got to just be mindful that it would be all athletics and all extracurricular.
I mean, why aren't we considering other options like, um, weekly testing for those who can't get mandated or the parents won't let them?
But that's where you come into the problem of how do you treat the team then? If somebody turns up positive?
I mean, you have the same example in the classroom, though, the teacher who doesn't get, um, vaccinated, has the, um, virus, and then the whole class has to suck down. I mean, you can look at it from the.
Well, except that you, you have more.
Yeah, they would have the masking, they would have distancing.
You would have better contact tracing in that situation.
Yeah, it would be a little bit different, and they're not.
There's no contact tracing in these sports.
There is, but most of the time, since it's high-risk, they can't mitigate, like, how long they were with, they were already hitting the person to tackle and spit, you know, all kinds of stuff coming on.
And the different positions that they play, um, like, on the football team, it's not like this player plays this position all of the time and is always in this location. They may be playing multiple positions, there's that whole cross interaction.
Who are they standing with next to on the sideline, you know, I mean, like, it's just, it's hard. The contract tracing process is so hard that what they end up doing, the DOH is saying, I got to quarantine everybody because I can't, I can't decipher who's where.
I really don't want, I mean, there are students who won't go to school because of, if they can't play sports, like, forget about coming to school, I'm not going to school if I can't play sports. Like, don't want those students coming.
What, a clarifying question, because I haven't been to a volleyball game yet, do the volleyball players wear masks when playing because they're indoors?
Well, they are recommended, it's tolerable, the, the language says, as long as it's tolerable for the athlete, and so, you know, we often see is this.
Okay, yeah.
Because it's not very tolerable.
Right, that's, yeah, no, playing sports in a mask is hard.
I mean, you know, basketball season, most of the kids were like this, right?
Right, yeah.
When they got to the free throw line, they may have put it up a little bit because they were, you know, more conscious, but when you're playing, you know, it's going to come down.
Yeah, no, that was just my question, so I wasn't sure where the, for indoor sports was.
I think having a conversation would be great.
Yeah, so, let us get more of a game plan, um, and then let us come back to you on the sixth with a potential, uh, action item for resolution for consideration, and then we go from there.
Right.
Uh, but at least then, at that point, we have a couple of weeks to engage athletes, their parents, get a true pulse of what the barrier may be, and maybe it is just access. And so, we have the clinic come here, we set it up, we get all the kids' appointments, we let them know that the board's considering this as a potential route, so let's get ahead of it, and then, and then I think at that point, you know, they're going to have to make some decisions and, um, you know, I think you make a great point.
And the families.
That it's, if it's a parent decision, then it's a parent decision, and the parent's going to have to deal with potentially that outcome, and, and again, I'm, it's a fine line, but I, I know I'm vaccinated because of all the other liberties that I get as a result of it, but some people are on different spots today, and so.
Okay. Uh, moving on to student placements, we have a resolution approving the placement of certain special education pupils. Uh, I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Erica.
And second?
Second, Noelani.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that carries. We have personnel items, approving consent items eight A-1 to eight B-5 concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept the motion to approve these items.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second.
Anne? Yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion, or those motions, I should say, carry. Resolution eight D-one requires a waiver of the forty-eight hour rule with regard to the resignation of a certain certificated employee, may I have a motion to approve this waiver?
So moved.
Noelani, second?
Second, Erica.
Erica. All those in favor of the waiver, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that waiver carries, then we have the resolution itself, eight D-one, accepting the resignation of the certificated employee. I'll accept the motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Anne, second?
Second, Bernice.
Bernice. Any discussion?
Excuse me.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have resolution eight D-two requiring waiver of the forty-eight hour rule with regard to the appointment of a certain certificated employee for a probationary period, probationary period. May I have a motion to approve this waiver?
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second, Erica.
All those in favor of this waiver, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Now, that waiver carries, and we have the resolution eight D-two approving the appointment of Michaela Miranda as the director of athletics, unless she's changed her mind.
That's not funny. That's, that's not funny.
I'll accept a motion to. May I have a, a?
So moved.
Anne, second?
Jamaica.
Jamaica. Okay, and any discussion?
Congrats.
Welcome. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we recognize Michaela Miranda as the director of athletics. Congratulations. We have resolution eight D-three requiring a waiver of the forty-eight hour rule with regard to the appointment of certain certificated employees for a temporary period. May I have a motion to approve the waiver?
So moved, Erica.
Erica, second?
Second.
Anne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries, and then we have resolution eight D-three appointing Avi Pena as, I don't know if I said that right, I'm sorry, as acting cohort principal at Schenectady High School and Tanya Delamater as acting principal at Van Corleere Elementary School. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved. Second, Bernice.
Oh, I heard, uh, Prinsella, okay, I, I didn't, I didn't quite catch the first person. Bernice. Any discussion?
Congrats.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we congratulate Tanya, who is here as well. She looks like the twin sister, we were noting, of, of, uh, Michaela, but, uh, I understand they aren't related. We have resolution eight D-four requiring a waiver of the forty-eight hour rule with regard to the change in position for three adult educators. May I have a motion to approve the waiver?
So moved.
Noelani, second?
Second, Anne.
Anne. All those in favor of the waiver, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Resolution eight D-four approves the change in position for those three adult educators. I'll accept the motion to approve that resolution.
So moved, Bernice.
Bernice, second?
Second.
Prinsella? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have our business items. We have a resolution authorizing the refund of certain taxes regarding Grace and Mercy Ministries property. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Erica.
Erica. Second. Myself. I, I, I hear the silence, guys. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have a resolution authorizing the refund of certain taxes regarding Niagara Mohawk property. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Noelani, second?
Second, Bernice.
Bernice. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. We have in, the interelastic, interscholastic swimming and diving program, a resolution approving an interscholastic swimming and diving program for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. I'll accept the motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Anne, second?
Second, Bernice.
Sorry?
Bernice.
Bernice, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
I just want to say, we've done a number of these the last few years, and I'm so happy because it gives the kids from both schools an opportunity to participate in sports.
When we don't have enough to field in a particular sport.
So, it's, it's nice that we can cooperate with other school districts and provide them those opportunities.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion for swimming and diving passes. Uh, we now have a second opportunity for comments from any board members?
Just a quick comment, I forgot, there's, I believe there's a swim meet this Friday and Saturday here at the high school, I'm not sure what time, but it's Friday, Saturday, swim meet.